As you can tell, the electronics have certainly sped up our meeting. When it works. I'll order Jefferson County Commission for our quarterly meeting. We have twenty present and one absent. At this time, we will have our prayer by our chaplain, Commissioner Douglas. We'll have pledge allegiance by Commissioner Solomon. What's for you?
Father, as always, we come to you tonight thankful, Lord. Thankful for our county, thankful for our citizens that are represented here in this city. Father, as again always, we ask that you would help us be good stewards and guide Jefferson County in the right direction, and Lord bless us all. Be with us in Christ's holy name and pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is approval and corrections of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Scott.
If you would, I'd like to move out of new business and move it up after appearance of citizens to resolution on zoning. And here's several people here who won't look at that and know how we vote. So let's move it up to the front of the meeting because, okay.
We have a second. We have a second discussion. I'm in favor of moving Resolution 2129 to right after the appearance of citizens. Can they go ahead and vote? Vote yes if you're in favor, no if you're against. It passes. All right. The agenda has been amended. Mr. Fagan.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to the agenda under new business.
Okay.
A motion that was presented to the Budget Committee from the Sales Committee. Guarding sign, Dr. Mr. County Office.
Do we need to suspend rules to add that? Say your motion. Motion to suspend rules and add that recommendation too. Get the screen on. Now a motion and a second. Start a discussion. Seeing none, I'm in favor. Wait, go ahead. Okay.
So is that where we, the facility sent that budget request through?
Correct.
Okay. We didn't bring that in the budget meeting when we were preparing on more information from the federal government? Did you still want to put it on there?
I did. Other discussion. Seeing none, I'm in favor of suspending rules and adding this to new business. Vote yes, opposed, vote no. Passes fifteen five. Now, we have the agenda.
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds?
Fourteen.
Fourteen would do it, right?
Yes.
So it passes fifteen five, it's two-thirds in court. So now we have before us the agenda with the moving of the resolution under citizens' comments and adding the facility's motion by Mr. Fagan under new business. We'll need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion or any other motions to amend? Seeing none, I'm in favor, both yes, opposed, both no. carries nineteen one. Our agenda is approved. So here's a really good thing, our agenda, honoring resolutions and recognition. Now I would ask Jessica Elder and our Finance Director, Mr. Potts, they have been coming. We feel presented to her up in this cage up here, I'm going to get out. I'll speak. You just stand there and look pretty and you'll be all right. Okay. Jessica just recently got a certified public administrator, and that's going above and beyond as a county employee. It takes several years to get this, and it's a lot of work. So we just wanted to recognize her for her service in doing that, and it's a really, it's a really big accomplishment to get that. So thank you, Jessica, and we appreciate everything that you've done. Job well done. Our employees do great jobs, and we want to recognize them when they do a little extra. Our next person is Don Phillips, Parrotwood Library. Don, I can't get down to you, but if you'll come up here and stand where people can see you, I have a proclamation for you. Mr. Reed, of course, with this, he must have learned a lot, had the Reed problem down there, or he hated him. We appreciate what you've done. All our libraries do a great job, but your grant capability is just, just great. Whereas it is with appreciation and gratitude, we recognize the leadership and dedication of Don Phillips, Director of Parrotwood Memorial Library. And we're asked, Director Phillips, through the Friends of Parrotwood Memorial Library, has recently been awarded a $10,000 grant from the Jane L. Patway Foundation, making a grand total awarded from this foundation of $32,000. Under the leadership and determination of Director Phillips, to apply for grants and through the Friends of Parrotwood Memorial Library, a total of $86,533 has been awarded from all grants since 2015. These grants have provided many resources for the community, such as virtual computer classes, adult literacy program, summer reading programs, and many others. Now therefore, I, Mark Potts, on behalf of the residents of Jefferson County, hereby recognize the contributions and dedication of Director Don Phillips. Thank you. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the approval of meetings. We can take them as a hall or we can divide them up. We have a motion by Mr. Solomon, second by Mr. Coleman. Is that all our meetings or are you going to vote on separately?
That's all, oh.
Agreed, Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Any objections from the body? Any amendments or corrections to the meetings? All in favor of approving the meetings as presented? Vote yes, opposed, vote no. Nineteen one. Thank you. Appearance of citizens. So I had, the first one is, believe it or not, is not related to the zoning, so we're going to let them go first. David Seal, he kind of microphone, state your name and address, and we have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David Seal, seven thirty, seven hours road in Danridge. Chamber of Commerce has requested funding under the promise of transparency. Once again, they're turning over a new leaf. A new opportunity to connect with the citizens and be upfront with records, winning the hearts and minds of people as they recruit industry in the county. How many times have we heard this fairy tale? They gave the Budget Committee a printout of expenses, a manual suggested without source documents to back it up. Same old bait and switch we've seen before. When citizens ask the Chamber for records or access to meetings, they get a letter like this from the Chamber of Attorneys stating they're not subject to transparency or open records. New County Commission allowed them to operate in secret, public money, and it creates distrust. If you want to know what it feels like to have a secret project around Danridge Road, just ask the people at D-Market about the intermodal project. Secrecy breeds distrust and leads to needless confrontation. Rather than waste money on the Chamber of Commerce, this county needs to create an office of business development, an open door system to vet ideas, identify appropriate with people, appropriate locations for industry, assist existing business with expansion, facilitate incentives, provide for grant funding, and most of all, create trust and cooperation with all the stakeholders. And I pray that you take the opportunity to create such an office. Any questions? Mr. Reed.
Mr. Seal, you know that we have a large group of people gathered here tonight for a rezoning request. If we had a office of economic development that was under the umbrella of a mayor and he or she that filled that position, is there any way that you believe that they could play an important part in a decision that all of us are facing tonight, as commissioners and as citizens?
Like I was saying, they could recommend appropriate locations for business. They could assist with financing and marketing. They could facilitate tax incentives. In the case of this slaughterhouse that's being considered, they could find an appropriate location in an industrial area for that, possibly offer them some incentives to move there. They could work out the terms of such an agreement with the county attorney and the IDB that has jurisdiction over that area, wherever it happens to be. And there are several advantages to it. It could offset the property owner's cost of real estate. It could provide sewer and other infrastructure that's not available in Newmarket. We could gain a slaughterhouse that we need for the county, provide good paying jobs. We could address the property concerns of the people in Newmarket. Now, if it calculated some things on this, we could repurpose the cost in seven years if we subsidize their property cost. We could hold community meetings with this group, with all the stakeholders. We could address zoning regulations, inform the public, study the overall property impact of it. We could educate the public, the public on policy and regulations. We could brainstorm creative solutions. This office can facilitate that with a citizen government advisory committee. They can study the overall financial impact, and then from that, they can make recommendations that would be driven by citizen advisory committee. Can't think of a better opportunity than that to mitigate some of the problems you're going to face here tonight. Facilitate grants and low interest loans to support this business we're talking about.
I hate to stop you, Mr. Seal, but we've got to run over. I know you're answering the commissioner's question. Could you finish it quickly?
That's it.
Thank you.
Your timing is perfect, clear.
That was probably one of the best times I've ever timed it. So we have a lot of people wanting to speak on the same issue. As I look through this packet, is there somebody here that's to speak on something that other than the zoning? I didn't see it, so okay, I just want to make sure that you didn't get lost in the shuffle here. So I have a stack here, as you can imagine, you know, who goes first. So here's what I'd like to do. People that own property, adjoining this property, I'd like for those people to be able to get to go first. You just identify that you're a property owner, and then once a property owner, unless there's a property owner that's speaking in favor of it, allow someone that's speaking in favor of it, if there are, and kind of rotate back and forth. So if a, someone who owns a property, adjoining this, that has filled out a citizen's request, if you would come to the microphone and speak.
I'll go first.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blamens and Commissioner Reed gave you a handout.
Can we get your name and address, please?
I'm so sorry. My name is Danny Berry. I live at five thirty-five Bruner Road in Strawberry Plains. My home and land is priced at $5,320,000. And before I start, I would like to thank the commissioners who returned my emails, answered telephone calls, talked to me on the phone, and then those that made in-person visits to the site. You are most appreciated. The point I want to address is the traffic, and that's the handout that I gave you. One of the LLC members stated that vehicles dropping off livestock would enter through the back entrance. The back entrance, I assume, would be Old Andrew Johnson Highway. How will the vehicles get to Old Andrew Johnson Highway? Either Bruner Road or S-Liner. Yesterday, Bob and I got out and we took some road measurements to give you. S-Liner Road is sixteen feet wide, eight feet per lane. Old Andrew Johnson Highway is eighteen feet wide, nine feet per lane. Bruner Road is fourteen feet wide, seven feet per lane. All are considered two-lane roads, striped in the middle, designated two lanes. According to U.S. Highway Statistics, or the information they gave, highway lanes are twelve feet wide. According to state regulation, roads are considered to be safe at ten feet per lane wide. Would you consider these roads safe? Bruner is marked with a speed limit of twenty miles per hour, a ten-ton weight limit, and no through trucks. You can see that on your handout. S-Liner is marked with low shoulder, no through trucks. Again, are these roads safe? And I want to leave and have you ponder one question. Who will gain and who will lose if this rezoning passes? Nine men with deep pockets will gain. Who will lose? Residents, homeowners, and taxpayers of the Strawberry Plains community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Pettit, do you want to speak in favor?
Could I refer to Mr. Fisher?
Sure, sure.
I mean, I don't want to turn my talk, but I will.
That's, you were right here, and I kind of feared that you were in favor of it.
Yes.
Okay.
Ready?
Yeah, I need your name and address, sir.
My name's Kenneth Finch, five eighty-one, that's on your road in D-Market. I'm one of the people involved in the harvesting facility in the days where the rubber mix of rubber. We have heard the concerns about this venture, and we don't take them lightly. I will accept your decision because that's what I told my family. I said, it's all up to you guys and ladies and the boss in your court. And I told them that it's in God's hands also, so whatever he wants, it'll work out. All these concerns have been discussed as a group from us, long before we even owned this property. And every one of us as a group are supporters of our local government. We support Jefferson County because we're taxpayers. All of us have had respective businesses in our fields. So I want to talk about some of the topics. Topic one, appearance. Our goal was to start out with a state-of-the-art facility, clean, neat, one that our customers could come to, and the farmers also. All of us at our homes, each and every one of you, you can make it a dump or you can make it nice. It's totally up to you. If we chose to try to do what's right, because I live 390 feet from my property. Number two, smell. This is one of the big issues. Our goal is little to no smell by cleaning and shipping off our byproducts daily. USDA will not let us begin work if we get this facilitated right to start up a ship unless it's cleaned to their expectations. So remember this, okay? We want to make sure it's right. Other environmental impacts. Well water, which is important to all of us, is our drinking water. Our excess water will run through the filter system, and it'll all be taken, it should be taken care of. Running water into Beaver Creek, been mentioned, been mentioned a lot. We have responsibilities as human beings, as people, as stewards of the, of the community to take care of the land. Laws require this. We put measures in place to make sure this doesn't happen. Safety of the roads. All of our customers, farmers, will be coming in the back way, like she mentioned. Farmers will deliver off the old highway. If farmers deliver off and go down Bruner Road, as she mentioned, five homes will get going to get to that facility. If farmers deliver off S-Liner, two homes to get to that facility. We're only harvesting ten per day, so at max, that's ten pickup trucks and trailers compared to a big tractor and trailer. On any given week, through this, on any given weekend, we can go by S-Liner Road, and horse trailers constantly go up and down to go ride on the, on the river. That's my point. I don't know of any accidents there.
Okay, your time is up. Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Another property owner that joins this property or nearby. Somebody's come. Name and address.
My name's David Lockhart. I live at five fifteen Bruner Road. My wife and I have lived there for about forty years. And first, I'd like to thank each one of you all that are on the commission. I know it's a hard job. I started on the school board for eight years, so I know what you're going through. I know the struggles that you put on, that you're putting up with, and that you go through each time. The reason I'm speaking tonight is to ask you to think about the people of Strawberry Plains. I know you've been overwhelmed with calls, emails, many of us voicing your concerns about the rezoning. That's the biggest part. We're, we're not against the facility. We don't, I mean, we know that it needs to be done in the county. The rezoning of I-2 is what our main concern is. Our front door is approximately 300 yards from the land that's being considered. Our family, along with other residents, on one of the five houses on Bruner Road you were talking about. We're, us and a large number of people in the community are strongly opposed to this rezoning. We do understand it's a business, a business opportunity for the investors. However, while the investors stand a profit, the residents are the ones who suffer. There have been a lot of concerns stated, and I'm not going to restate all those, but like I say again, we're not against the slaughterhouse, we're just against the rezoning. And I do encourage you to listen to the people of Strawberry Plains, and hear our concerns, and we would appreciate any help that we could give you are, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Lockhart. Someone wants to speak in favor of the, are you in favor? Yes. Can you give us your name and address?
Tom Makins, 2251 Charlie Hodger Road. I live, as crow flies, not five minutes. I could walk to that property in five minutes to my home. I'm 100% for it, and the reasons for that is I raise cattle. If one of my cows has a cag today, I gotta wait two years and take it out of Jefferson County into Green County to get it slaughtered. Any slaughterhouse around here, it's 18 to 24 months minimum. Well, I generally like to slaughter mine at about 18. So I've got cows sitting around, I can slaughter. We don't have the siblings. Furthermore, I'd like to keep my money in Jefferson County, is what I'd like to do. I understand, I've talked to the man putting this on, and this is going to be a first-class establishment. I don't think it's going to bother anybody in the community, and I'm not concerned about anything like that. That's my opinion.
Thanks, sir. Property owner near or around?
Good evening. I'm Heath Woods, five thirty-six Bruner Road. According to my map, I'm probably the closest house to it. I thought my other neighbors may be closer, but based on what I see tonight, I'm probably closest to the back. I got up last week and spoke to you about my back deck's about 200 yards from, from the proposed site. I need everyone to understand that I'm not standing here today speaking that we don't need this. I have the best man in my wedding, he's a cattle farmer. I understand what we're looking at. I think our problem here is we are not considering the same things. It is money and convenience issue. By having this, our local meats LLC is going to make money. They've made no bones about it, and I agree. I start a business, you can't make money. Here in our county, actually, this is a city. It's going to be here, very convenient. They won't have to go to Hancock County, which was established last year. But with their money made and their convenience, I'm afraid the things that come with a slaughterhouse and an I-2 zoning will be a money loss on the process, on the worth of my house, on the traffic, which will create the inconvenience. Their money and inconvenience shouldn't be at the cost of my money and my inconvenience. That's all I'm saying. I think that this is needed, I just don't think this is the right place for it. So after speaking last week, I thought to myself, okay, got a lot to lose right here. Think I'll contact the man who owns the 200 yards between my deck and the site. Sent word to the gentleman that I was interested in purchasing. He sent word back to me. He was not willing to sell it right now. Like exactly I said, I'm not interested in selling it right now. I will entertain any price that you give me, but I need you to understand that I've already been approached by the slaughterhouse people for extra land. I'm concerned. Thank you for all you do.
Thanks, sir. Someone that wants to speak in favor?
Hi, I'm Anna Nicely Barrero. Please sit right there.
Yes, welcome back.
425 Davis Road, Strawberry Plains. I am a farmer. I raise beef and I raise pork. And I see a lot of friendly faces here, a lot of my intermodal family. We fought hard and long to keep heavy, polluting industry out of our community, and we did it. Very, very proud of us for doing that. And I completely, I think I understand why so many people are opposed to this, because they're picturing a similar type situation. They're seeing, in their mind, they're picturing something like that nasty chicken house in Moorestown. It smells god awful. We all have been by there, we've all smelled it, we've all seen it. You go five miles, you don't smell it. That's not what this is. That's not what this is. I think people might be picturing an industrial slaughterhouse. There's four of those in all of the United States, by the way. Four that process almost all of our meat. And that's why we have supply chain issues and we can't get meat during crises like we've been facing. It's not that. There will not be semi-tractors and trucks coming in with cattle. It's, people are calling it a slaughterhouse and yes, you do have to slaughter the animal to make it dead so you can cut it up and process it, but I always approach it as a butcher shop. Because as a farmer, for the last five years, I have been driving every week, one to two times a week, to five different butcher shops that are the closest to me and I go to different ones because they're so booked and I have to book one to two years out to get an appointment. Four to five hours round trip, I'm driving to drop off an animal once or twice a week. Then I drive another four to five hours round trip to pick that meat up. I could be doing that right here in Strawberry Plains. Yeah, that would benefit me greatly, but also open doors to other farmers who I have spoken to who raise beef. They would like to sell their meat to the community, but they don't have four to five hours twice a week to drive to get their meat slaughtered because they don't have an 83-year-old uncle and a 74-year-old father who are still running the farm for them. Gosh, I've gone really long. So I drive down Old AJ Highway at least twice a week with my truck and trailer. Nobody's ever complained so far. I buy by the speed limit. I'm not destroying the road, I don't think. I mean, there might be like a cow park or something, but you know, there's cows everywhere. Those are the kinds of, it's like me, this is the kind of person that's what's, sir, a local farmer who doesn't have to drive four to five hours out of the county. And I, all of these slaughterhouses I go to, I call them butcher shops, they're clean. They're not nasty. You don't even, you wouldn't even know, there's a place in Danridge I go to sometimes, you would never know it was a slaughterhouse if it didn't say meat processing facility. There's no smell, there's no evidence of dead animal, there's no guts. They pick the guts up every day they heal, they call them off. I think what people are picturing is something that this is not. I think they're picturing heavy industry. I would fight tooth and nail to keep heavy polluting industry out of my community and I have and I'll do it again, but I don't think that's what this is because I go to places just like this every single week. They're not disgusting, they don't stink, they're not eyesore's. Some of them are so nice and neat, you would think somebody lived there. I mean, you just, I think that there's a misunderstanding of what this place is going to be and what it's actually going to be. And as a farming community, I'm sorry, I'm out of time just real quick. We love our views of the farms and the open space. We want to keep those views, we've got to keep those farmers in business. And it is harder and harder every day, you know what I'm saying, to make a living as a farmer.
I'm sorry to turn times up. It was a good speech. Somebody that lives near, that is above, yes, ma'am?
My name is 2213 West Old AJ Highway. I'm, I don't know, either the woods or we are going to be closer, it's one of us. It's not the slaughterhouse we're opposing. It's not a meat processing facility we're opposing. It's the zoning, it's a zoning issue. Local meats is proposing to rezone an agricultural and residential area to an I-2 heavy industrial zone. Heavy industrial zoning includes chemical waste storage, incinerators, and smelting plants. If this is rezoned to this extreme, any company wanting to put one of these businesses in our county will be successful. Zoning this area to an I-2 is going to set a precedence that you cannot come back from. If a chemical waste company buys cheap farmland and wants to rezone it and it's denied, it sets the county up for lawsuits regarding zoning, which they're going to lose against these companies because they've already zoned something I-2. I hope y'all have researched this and seen that it's a zoning issue and what I-2 brings. We've always supported our local farmers. This would be an asset in Jefferson County, whether it's a beautiful slaughterhouse or an ugly slaughterhouse if it's in the right place. It's going to bring in revenue and make it easier for the farmers to butcher and sell their meat, but this is not the right place. This is the wrong place. Local meats investors have over 400 acres of property owned between them. However, not a one has volunteered just seven acres to have it zoned heavy industrial. Why? They don't want a heavy industrial zoning in their residential community. If they don't want it in literally their backyard, y'all should not have to put it in ours.
Do you want to say how's your applause? Are you speaking in favor? What's your name, sir and address?
My name is Doug Shackelford. I live at 2451 West Highway 11A, Strawberry Plains. I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of my family. We have five homes, we, five households, five homes that are within one mile of this location. And as a side note, we all have wells and are not the least big concern about water quality. We live in an agricultural area and if you live near a farm or anywhere in Jefferson County, you've already got agricultural runoff in your groundwater anyway. I am here to speak on behalf of local meats. I am in support of it because we graze beef cattle. We are not a large operation. We do it to keep the family fed. We have tried for four months now, I called every meat processor within a day's drive and it is 18 to 24 months. We have a standing reservation with sellers in White Hunt and once a year we can take one steer. And that makes it difficult for us. I believe that the meat processors in our area need a local place to do this. It's also going to provide local prime meat for the community, for anyone in Jefferson County. And until you've eaten fresh local meat, you don't understand what that is compared to what Walmart offers. There are no facilities that we can go to and we need this facility. The farm community would support in the area. It would be tax revenue for the county and, you know, today, having cattle processed is not like it used to be. When I was young, I remember my dad and an uncle and my grandfather would kill a cow in the barn and take it to white stores and their butcher would butcher it and package it and we'd go pick it up. Can't do that now. And so we need this facility.
Thanks, sir. Someone that's close or near to speak against?
Yes, sir. My name is David Benjery, 3151 Hodges Switch Roads, Strawberry Plains, Tennessee. There's an old saying, a lot of you have heard it, if you give them an inch, they're going to take a yard. And that's what we're afraid of here. It's not the slaughterhouse. The slaughterhouse is not the issue. The issue is zoning. If we go with that I-2 zoning, you are going to open a Pandora's box that will haunt you for the rest of your life. And you can put in a smelting plant, you can bury toxic waste. It's more than a slaughterhouse, people. And let me tell you something, you're not only thinking about right now, we're thinking about your children, your grandchildren, and your great-grandchildren. And what they're going to face if you open this, if you let this genie out of the bottle, I swear you'll regret it. It is not the slaughterhouse, it is the zoning. It is not the right place to put I-2 zoning. It's dangerous and it can lead to precedent where somebody buys a pristine piece of land and somebody with deep pockets comes in and says, guess what? I want to put in a smelting plant and there's not a damn thing you can do about it. People will be afraid to come to Jefferson County. They'll be afraid to build homes on nice land because they don't know what is going to happen next year or the year after that that's going to ruin what they've come here to love. So all I ask you to do is consider just in the point of your children, your grandchildren, and your great-grandchildren and govern yourselves accordingly. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Aaron Loy, 2442 GW Borger. I appreciate the opportunity to speak briefly on this subject this evening. I'm a lifelong resident of Newmarket, currently living in the Rocky Valley community, just a few short miles from the proposed site of this custom processing facility. Also currently serve as president of the Jefferson County Farm Bureau and vice president of the Jefferson County Livestock Association. However, the title I'm most proud of and feel luckiest to have is that of being a farmer and more specifically a young farmer, which unfortunately is becoming more rare to see as every year goes by. We continue to see this area's cash crops of the past like dairy, tobacco, and hog production continue to be vertically integrated or disappear altogether. Thus making it less economically viable for family farms to continue and almost impossible for beginning young farmers like myself to have a career in production agriculture. Our farmers here in the county and abroad face unimaginable challenges to stay in business, one of which being the fact that currently 84% of our meat packing industry is controlled by four big packers, two of those being foreign owners. As consolidation has increased, the spread between live animal prices and retail price that these consumers pay at the grocery store continues to grow, leaving our livestock producers with the smallest share for their products in many decades. While the cost of our inputs to do this only increases, in order for our family farms here in the county to continue and remain intact and pass on to the next generation, they must first be profitable. If not, we may continue to see rezoning scenarios such as this, but instead for yet another farm to be driven up to accommodate local homes and low-cost fed houses. Our farmers need alternative markets to capture more value from their livestock and this facility is a valuable resource in allowing them to do so. I encourage our commissioners to support that.
We could have applause, please. Someone against that lives near? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Carrie DeGastren. I live at 568 Bestland Road, Newmarket, Tennessee. I think we can all agree that we're not opposed to growth in Jefferson County, we need it. What we are opposed to is the zoning. The citizens of Strawberry Plains are worried and concerned due to the resulting issues that are currently being implemented in our community and with good reason. We are concerned about the health and well-being of our families. The infiltration to our water system is a great concern as most families have well water. To have city water ran to these houses is astronomical. The smell, the noise, the pollution, pathogens, dangerous chemicals, destruction of waterways, this parent handle response continues to grow. Beaver Creek returns downstream from this seeped water lake with, filled without a shadow of a doubt, receives runoff from this facility. We all go bad. I know because my parents, who are now deceased, lived in the two-story brick home, which is known as 2108, Best Haway 11A. When heavy rains would come down, they could undoubtedly flood our basement. We had issues with that until we had it fixed. That water would run down through our house, through the field, through the, I don't know, we also own Boland Market at the time, and it would run through the pavement down to Beaver Creek. Aside from all that, our property values will go down. Who's going to want to live next to a slaughterhouse? I certainly don't. I'm sure no one else will. It will decrease their value and our insurance will go up. We, like I said, we're not opposed to growth we need in Jefferson County. What we are saying is this is the wrong zone. There are other places this can be put at. If the farmers are so for it, they've got land, put it on their plant. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone to speak in favor? Will give us your name and address, you have three minutes, sir.
My name is Mark Dennis. I live at 2431 Forest Road, Newmarket, Tennessee. And I'm the president of Local Meats LLC. I have heard the arguments tonight and in some ways I do not disagree with what they're saying. When I met with Mr. Seals in the zoning office, I said, you've got a slaughter facility for agricultural use in this deal, but that's what we had to choose. But I'm going to give you a little background on local meats and what we intend to do. We got together about May of last year, two or three of us got together, we started talking about how hard it was to get meat in the grocery store, how hard it is to get animals slaughtered. I've worked in the service industry all my life and our services, you know, we're a group of farmers, we came together, we're not rich, we're not got deep pockets, but we've got ideas and we were trying to help our fellow farmers in our community. We have done this and we've looked at it. We have looked at every issue that you all brought up tonight. We have got studies on it, I mean, we don't have them published. This is how I keep notes and that's terrible. I can't read them tonight because of the fact that it rained as us coming in and they all smeared. But, you know, we know the concerns you've got. Know we're not going to go any bigger than what we're allowed to. I mean, the reason we didn't go to A1, the way, the reason we didn't stay with A1 is that gives you a 20 cow minimum or 20 head minimum. You can't be profitable unless you get over 30 to 35 heads. Our goals are to do 50 head a week, that's 10 a day. And that's where we're at. I mean, and we're not trying to shove this down anybody's throat. I picked up a mock-up drawing of what it would look like, how it fits on the property. We tried to put it further away from all the residents. I've got the footage, you know, of what it is from each resident. You know, and actually Ben Stoddard, one of the gentlemen that sold us the property, lives the closest to the property site there. He knew what we were going to do when we purchased the property. I mean, I don't see that we have done wrong. I mean, we will have meetings, we will be glad to talk with you when we get our plans together, but as you can tell, we're new at this. We're not really businessmen, we're farmers. And if you know what a farm, what it's like to farm, it's extremely hard to come up with an idea of seven ups or eight ups together. I appreciate your time and I'll entertain any questions that the commission has.
Thank you, sir. Someone adjoining or near the property to speak against?
My name is Jewel Roderick. My husband's name is Jared Roderick. I've lived in this state, 2203 West Old Avery Johnson Highway, on the corner of Estelar for 49 years. And we've had all kinds of trouble with our water, mostly because of mines. I've been up here before and tried to talk, see if we could get help because our water hit levels had been dropped three times, we're at the bottom of our well. My big concern with this facility is to get a coile or something like that in our water. I know they say they're going to have a system to filter that, but I've bred a lot of it and accidents happen and it gets in the water. Please help us to resolve.
Thank you, ma'am. Someone to speak in favor?
My name is Dennis Rose, 1203 McCarty Road, Knoxville, Tennessee. My name is Dennis Rose, twelve oh three McCarty Road in Knoxville, Tennessee. I'm an owner of local meats. I'm a farmer in Jefferson County. I own a farm in Strawberry Plains, less than two miles from the site. I have a business. I'm a general contractor with a full municipal utility license, and I guess what I'm going to address is the water runoff, the wells, and what we plan to do and what goes where. This site has been pre-approved as far as what our park does and where the water can go. This is a very small system. This is not gonna be a system much bigger than your residential home. The difference in this system, this system will have a septic tank and a drain, and it will take care of our public restaurants that have to be in this facility. Nothing happens in this facility that is not approved by the county or state, all right? We will have a approved grease trap interceptor, which every restaurant has that you eat at, every one of them. What we're gonna do above and beyond that is a filtration system inside the grease interceptor, a very common filter. We put them on septic tanks, we put them on grease traps in restaurant situations all the time. This system isn't even gonna compare to the wastewater system that we have at Rush Throw or we have at Mount Oral. Same system, it's a conventional system. The nurse is gonna be much smaller because our water use is gonna be about fifteen hundred gallons per day, okay? We have been compared to Swagerty's, whose use, water use on a daily basis is seventy-five thousand gallons, okay? There's the difference. This is a small meatpacking facility. No chemicals, no soap, nothing can be used in this facility because it touches food. It has to be food grade. When you eat in a restaurant, anywhere, any restaurant, anywhere in this state, they have to have the same standards that we're gonna have in this meat processing facility. So, chemicals used in this facility that are food-grade chemicals, they're also tracked. They're tracked by standard operating procedure, which is required for us to provide. So, you know, we're being completely transparent with this and upfront. And like I said, you know, we can do several things that would, I don't know how to make it any more transparent. We've got it laid out there, you know, so we just appreciate your consideration.
Thanks, sir. There was a lady who wanted to speak against it, stood up, and almost got up here.
Thank you so much.
And the clerk was gonna give you six minutes. It looked like there. She can use it.
Thank you very much. My name's Alexa Wolf. I live at four fifty-nine Casey Lane in Strawberry Plains. I'm so appreciative of your time, and I thank so much the farmers that are working. This has nothing to do-
Go closer to the light.
This has nothing to do with the facility. We need this facility. We love the farmers. You can look at our Kito plan, figure and tell. I love me. Has nothing to do with that. It is the zoning. If you look back two years ago, we would never have assumed that we would have had a global pandemic. We don't know what's coming up in the next few years. I-2 will allow things like incinerators. What if that means incinerating bodies, incinerating animals? Could that mean if there's another pandemic that we would be incinerating diseased things? We don't know. Do you really want to allow something like that? Don't open a Pandora's box that could damage this land forever and ruin our children's, children's, children's future. You don't know. You don't know. And these people who want to do a wonderful land could sell this to someone who does not care about the future of keeping we live here. And that's why I have to say thank you.
Thank you. Someone to speak in favor?
A lot of you might know me most if you don't, with this panel, but I got one.
What's your address, Mr. Reed?
Two forty-three Roosevelt Road. I've got a farm right next to the Lloyds over there in Rocky Valley, about three miles from there. I've probably handled more cattle than anybody in Jefferson County over the last forty years. I've had Phelox in Kansas, I've had a slaughterhouse in Kansas. I know these people are not against this slaughterhouse, they're against the zoning. What can the county do about the zoning? So, it's him right there. What are we gonna do to him? What can you do?
Well, I don't have, except it's land permission.
Can't you change something?
Maybe, that's something.
That's something that needs to happen. These people don't want this knocked in their head because they don't want a slaughterhouse. It's been the prettiest place ever was when Mark gets done with it, you know, because obviously did he fix it. And it's that simple. Mark will take care of it, right? But you're going about it the wrong way. The county of Jefferson County needs to take care of this zoning for this project because it's surely needed. It's just that simple. And you can do it. I know you can.
Thanks, sir. Someone near the property that's-
I live at five sixty-eight Estelina Road. Step out my front door and let the diagonal at the sign that got it. It's part of the property. Like I wanna look, a slaughterhouse or a store to sell, law move. Every time I look out my door or out my window, it's a little ominous. What about this water system? He says he had a filter. I'll listen. I used on restaurants. You have a pit that filter sets in. And where it rains, that pit runs over. What you gonna do then? All that waste that's in that filter comes out and goes all over the top of the ground. What you gonna do? Your kids blaze in that. Your kids smell that. I am opposed to this. At the location it is, you can have all the meat process facilities anywhere you want, but don't do it here.
Thanks, sir. Anyone in favor to speak? Now in favor?
You go, you go with five, because that's what we did.
We have, as everyone that joins this property spoke. Do you need to speak? Yes, ma'am, please come up.
I thank you again for your time on Christie Wood. I live at five three-six Brunner Road in Strawberry Plains. In last week, when I came to speak to you, I asked you three questions. I said, number one, please vote no for this rezoning. It's not against my fellow Jefferson Countyans. I hear the need, I want the need, but I agree with the last gentleman, it's a zoning issue. Please do some work so that that can happen. Question number two was, please do research, find out, and I know some of you have, thank you for that. And then at the third question, I said, "Please drive by my house, come see where I live, where my family, where my boys live, where I wanna give to my boys, where we have sweat equity, we have home equity, we have remodeled, we rebuilt, we built on, we've spent money in Jefferson County to do that. We've used my husband's mother, what she left us. She worked two jobs. We've all got a family story to tell." But the last question I wanna ask you, and I wanna add on to what some people have said, is I wanna, I would love to hear a solution for us, everybody in this room, that's unified and that's a win-win. In my opinion, if you vote yes, any of you right now that are still thinking, I'm gonna vote yes, to rezone this creek of property, I-2, it's a win-win. We can make a win-win. I believe in you. You're doing this job for a reason, to serve our public. So, please, come up with a way. Please do not vote tonight. There's more time. Let's figure out a way to help our farmers, to help the LLC. Please do not vote, because it's gonna become I-2. I feel like that's a huge mistake. It's a huge loss for Wood's family. It's a huge loss for my neighbors that have spoken. And I feel like in my opinion, it's a huge loss if you vote yes for Strawberry Plains. So, please, vote no to rezoning to I-2 and come up with another solution. I think we can do that as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me ask a question. Are there any other people here to speak in favor? So, let me ask this question. We've had a lot of discussion, Commissioner. They said, okay, if anyone that has signed up to speak, do you have any other reason other than what has been heard here tonight to oppose this? You don't? Please come forward.
I'm Nelson. I live on Judson Road in Strawberry Plains. I've worked about forty hours on this because I believe in my community and I believe in Jefferson County in preserving the integrity of our county. This is a zoning issue. Do you realize, and many of you all don't even know this, zoning was put in place in Jefferson County in nineteen ninety-eight. I ones were grandfathered in in our community because the mines were already here. The agricultural and the residential community in our pocket that this zoning is being requested to be done has not changed since nineteen ninety-eight. There has been two pieces of the property rezoned. One was the intermodal site that tried to come in, and all of that land got rezoned to I-1. There's been another piece, one more piece, is only the only piece recorded in our community, and it was rezoned to C-2. Our community was intended to be an agricultural and a residential community, and you are asking to put an I-2 zoning smack dab in the middle of all of these, these land, these places that are people's homes. There's deep restrictions on some of these places that many of you all live. I take my I-go-get-meat every year. I don't see how doing ten, ten bigs a day and fifty is going to take care of the backlog that they keep, everybody keeps claiming. I've heard fifty, they've also stated a hundred. There's something wrong with the picture. You all have the opportunity, just like I think David, David mentioned, and Mark has mentioned, you have a way to develop a place, a way to manage this. I-2 zoning does not belong where you're asking for it to be. It's wrong. It's the wrong place. I wanna see the slaughterhouse done somewhere. You know what? We have all, all of, all of the people that oppose this have stepped up and said, "We are not opposed to the slaughterhouse." We have willingly stepped up and said that, but they have yet to say, "I have chosen the wrong place to put this." I don't appreciate the chamber supporting them when they're not supporting the integrity of the other businesses in that area. That was wrong. That was wrong. We need zoning reform in this county. It needs to go through. Every single zoning needs to be reformed. There are no developmental standards, none, for slaughterhouses. They can do whatever they wanna do. They can say they're gonna be USDA, they can say they're gonna be EPA. I don't care, but you have no standards in place for that slaughterhouse. They can, they can say this is what they're gonna do, but there are no developmental standards in this zoning book that set, that you have any restrictions on. Why would you ever approve any I-2 zoning until you work on the zoning in this county? And I respectfully ask you to do that.
Thank you. Is there anyone? Is there anyone that has a point that hasn't been made already?
Commissioners, thanks for your time. My name is Andrew Romine. I live at five four-two Reserve Lane in Andridge. I'm actually here representing Tennessee stands Jefferson County. We're a new chapter. I'm actually the president. And this was brought to my attention not just two weeks ago by a few commissioners and other concerned citizens. Jefferson County has a resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty-four that states that custom slaughterhouses don't need to be in I-2 zoning. They can be in Alpha One, Charlie Two, or India, India Ones. That was done in twenty nineteen. Like the lady, the stuff before me is, there's no guidelines to this whatsoever. If you rezon this to an I-2, you open a really big door. I also did some legal researches on what's called spot zoning. I pulled up Tennessee State Appeal Cases, Cronkite v. Rutherford County two thousand two, Fielding v. Moore County in twenty eleven. The basis to these, while bringing them up and actually have them here, was identifying the legal definition of the legal spot zone. Jefferson County has been developed and established as agricultural and residential to take one spot of land, even a couple of yards of a single parcel or a parcel out of a whole entire area, for the development of something that's out of the continuity of the community or the area overall, identifies one needed identifier for the legal spot zone. Then you have to look at the welfare and the continuity of the environment around it. I've heard a lot of people talk about EPA and USDA. I used to be a restaurant manager, and I can tell you, they are very, very, as you pointed out, there are no guidelines in this county for an I-2 zone because there isn't one. You just have a declaration from twenty twenty-one saying what you can't put in I-2. So, all I'm asking my commissioners is to put a motion up to table this for today. Let us pull back, let the investors get their stuff together, get a plan together, let the community come together and say, yes, we want the slaughterhouse, but where you're doing it, how you're doing it, is too fast and has not been developed properly. So, I ask the commissioners and the investors alike, take a step back, table this motion, let's do some more investigation. I only had this for a week, and I have so many questions that really need answering. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. We have nine other people, and all are opposed, as best I can tell. So, anyone that has signed up to speak, all of you are opposed. Right?
Yes.
I would like to proceed into the meeting. I understand you're here. I think all the points have been brought out, that can be brought out unless you have something different that hasn't been said. Do you have something that hasn't been said, certainly?
Yes, sir, I have something that hasn't been said. I mean, there's Jennifer Wilson. I live on Westford, Robyn Strawberry Plains. I've been a Strawberry Plains resident for fifteen years, and most of it began with my husband, Mackie, and his dad, Mackie, before him. So, I've got a lot of built-in love for Strawberry Plains. I emailed each of you in a mass email tonight, a petition that has been signed by over seven hundred and forty people in Jefferson County, outside of Jefferson County, and outside of Tennessee, who oppose this rezoning. If you look through it, you'll see people, not just from Strawberry Plains, but from all of your districts as well, who have signed and said, "This is wrong." Strawberry Plains is a beautiful place. It's agricultural, it's residential, it's not the place for an I-2 zoning, not at all. A couple of comments from some of them, just to kind of give you a guide. We have someone who lives in Alaska now. We have someone who lives in Alaska now, who says, my family still lives there. Strawberry Plains is where I grew up, it's a beautiful place, please don't change the plans. I do not want to see this on the main highway or close to my dear friends' homes. The beauty of this area has always been special and should remain that way. This is not the place to live in. I'll make that one more time, what everybody else has said tonight. We're not denying that there's a need for the business in Jefferson County. I buy beef, I buy beef out of Jefferson County, I'll admit it. And with this group, if this was done the current way, I would likely buy from them as well. But, there is no room for an I2 in Strawberry Plains. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that has something that hasn't been pointed out?
My name is Amy Neary, 2548 Day Road, Strawberry Plains. We were told at the meeting, one of the investors, that water would be brought in from KUB. We're talking about bringing the industry to Jefferson County. Why are they bringing water in from Knox County? Because that's where the end of the line is? Because they're going to pay for it? Why don't we bring water in from New Market Utilities, Keatsville County? Okay, there's a lot of commercial property, already zoned commercial in New Market, that's sitting there as an eyesore. Why can't they build their facility in New Market? Bring business to the county, don't pay Knox County for the water. I work for Knox County, I don't want to pay them for my water. Talking about the width of the road, the Rodericks. Not only are they on the corner of two roads, but every time the trailer stops, what does an animal do? Livestock. I've got livestock, I've got horses. They pee, they poop. They're going to do that at the corner, that's going to be dumped in the Roderick's front yard. When it rains, it goes to their well. There's a lot of things that need to be considered about the placement. I drive a horse trailer down those roads. If somebody's coming at me, I have to stop. I do not want to risk my animals. Somebody else wouldn't want to risk their children. People that have spoken, that live in the neighborhood, that have kids. You don't want to risk them for a trailer, somebody's running late for their appointment, comes flying down the road. I've worked wrecks with livestock, it's not pretty. That goes into the waste, the wastewater. Please don't vote for this because someone has put pressure on you as a commissioner to vote for it. Vote with your heart, this is our home. You don't live there, some of you do, some of you are our neighbors, live within a few miles. Vote the way you would want it, or not want it, in your community.
Thank you. I know others were signed up to speak. Would you be willing to just say that you are opposed to it? Or you, sir?
My name's Eric Loud, and I live at 502 Judson Road. My property is a lifelong property of my wife's family, that had a dairy farm. And they are all opposed to this. It's not that we don't want the meat facility, we buy local meat all the time. We chase it down, we want to support our community. We're not worried about a little bit extra drive. There's too many industrial places in Jefferson County already. You've got the industrial complex on 92 right here. You've got the one that this lady just mentioned right there, New Market, that's going to waste, it's already zoned. You can do this on a C1 and a C2, it doesn't need to be an I2. There's no need to have an industrial site in a residential area. The roads that everybody's talking about, it's not a safety issue. There's just not room to have that. Like the lady said, if she's towing her trailer, you have to stop, you have to get over to the side. I drive an SUV, if there's an SUV and a full-sized truck, you have to pull over. The roads are just not adequate, they're not built for it, and they're already limited. We have a limiting body in the county that says, hey, this road's built for this, it's not built for this. So are they going to repave all the roads and make everything to the standards that it would require? If you're going to do it, do it right. This is in our front yard, it's in their front yard. We don't want an eyesore five years down the road where everything's tore up. We just don't want the I2 in our neighborhood. That's all we want, that's all we want to say.
Thanks, sir.
My name is Ashley Massey, I live in Asher, neighborhood, 2809 Donnell Drive. I actually came here with a certain thing I wanted to speak about, but after hearing everything that's went on, I kind of went off the cuff now. I was going to speak about how one commissioner in here told a citizen, that I learned about at a community meeting, that the property values in our area were crappy anyway. So it didn't really matter, our property values weren't important anyway. But now after listening to these investors, I heard one investor say, we're new to this, we don't have plans yet, we don't quite know what we're doing. One investor said, we do know what we're doing, look, we bought some markers and colored pencils from Walmart and drew a pretty picture, it's not going to fall. I've heard one say, there's already agriculture runoff in, in the ground in Jeff County, so what's a little bit more? So, every single investor contradicted themselves. Are we going to do ten a day? I believe one newspaper put a hundred a week. What is it, what's the plan? Why are we going to turn this into industrial? One citizen said, they want to buy more land. If it's just a small storefront, why buy more land? Where are they planning ahead? What industrial people are they bringing in to make more money? What factories are going to be put in? I'm just very confused. Everything these investors said, they contradicted everything. Very, very confusing, we don't have answers. We need this to be put off, so we can get these things answered, get this zoning figured out. Any commissioners don't want it here, we don't want it here. So I suggest, any commissioner who wants it, sell it to your citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else? If not, well, there you go. You're in a trunk, too.
I am Jackie Alexander, 273 Go-Go's New Market.
You might have to get closer to the microphone, I'm sorry.
Jackie Alexander, 273 Go-Go's New Market. And we just moved out there, and I'm really saddened to hear that all this is happening. So we just found out about it kind of by accident. We love this area, we don't want to see a change. We've heard multiple people tell you, it's just the wrong location. And I love what the other woman said about, we're doing a win-win. You know, there is a win-win here, there absolutely is. And I implore you to find, we can put this vote off, let's do this right, this is a good idea. Everybody wants it. It's a location issue, it's a zoning issue. And I wanted to mention, you know, I heard some of the investors talking about chemicals, et cetera. I got a call from Costco the other day that my nitrogen sunscreen got recalled because it has benzene in it, which causes cancer. Point is, accidents happen all the time. You know, we can, they can have everything planned extremely well, and there's still risk. So putting it in the residential neighborhood is not the place to take that risk. Also, individually, if you want to walk out your front door, or look out in your backyard and see this plant, I'd be really interested to hear that. Because I don't know any of you, but if it's not going to be something that you're looking at, please don't force it on the residents that will have to. I hope that you don't vote based on dollar signs. They came from a community recently where that was the case. They wanted to rezone a lot to allow for an IKEA to come in, which would bring, according to the environmental impact report, approximately fifty thousand cars an hour, an hour, to an already gridlocked highway system. And they approved it. They'd already made up their minds that they were going to do it. So, I really hope that's not the case here, I really, really hope. You know, there is a win-win here. Please postpone your vote, and let's find it.
Thank you. Ms. Page, if you wish to speak, I have your list of... I decide I just might as well go down the list here.
Good evening, commissioners, and Mayor Cox, and the many, many citizens of Jefferson County. First thing before I begin, I want to thank Donna Phillips, and I know she's already left, but in her staff, all the wonderful work they've done here with her. She's done a great job, y'all need to come see her live. I work with the friends.
Ms. Page, will you give her your address, please?
Oh, sorry. 1388 Beaver Creek Road, Strawberry Plains. The issue that is important tonight, once again, is dividing our county. We've all faced this before, and no doubt we'll face it again in the future. But we will all want what's best for our community. The main debate is a location, okay? A residential agricultural area that wants, that the LLC wants changed to I2, or what the zoning commission wants changed to I2, so that they can have a USDA inspecting the slaughterhouse. It will open the doors to all, to future industrial development that we don't want in Strawberry Plains. Commercial, that's fine. But I go down New Market and I see the dump in New Market, I see the middle of the property, which is the dump. We don't want that kind of thing, and all of that could be removed, and we, you can put that kind of sort of house down there, I have no problem. One thing that really bothers me is why? After all we've gone through, with the intermodal and the mega site, the investors did not go to the community first and say, hey, you know, we want to possess it, this, we found this property, it's legit. Only seventy-six thousand dollars for seven acres, that's a good buy. But we want to put a slaughterhouse here. How many other people did they talk to before they, you know, decided and purchased this property? What are they going to do with it if it isn't I2, zone I2? You know, they're spent with it, and we're spent with an I2 zoning. I've been told that Mascon was suggesting to me, which is actually out of our county, that they did look at it, they want it here, and it's very close to any of their properties. So, anyway, thank you, I ask you tonight, urgently, to vote no or to postpone it, and let's see what else we can do.
Thank you, Ms. Page. David Nelson? But you are opposed, sir.
I am opposed.
Thank you. Benjamin Wolf?
My name is Benjamin Wolf, and I live at 459 Casey Lane, Ashley Oaks subdivision. I've bought the house in March, and have lived there since the beginning of June. The entrance to Ashley Oaks at Casey Lane, when you come to the stop sign and you turn your head right, you can see the property that they're talking about building this site on. I have a question to y'all. Is this the first I2 site in, zoning site in Jefferson County? Is there any other I2? I didn't, I didn't think so. And I've heard the investors say that they wanted the storefront for the selling of the meat. Well, could they not put a slaughterhouse on their hundreds of acres that they have around, and then transport meat to a butcher shop on Highway 11? And not have the facility right on Highway 11? Like I said, when, when we moved here, it was, we moved here because my in-laws have lived in Jefferson County for forty-something years, and we moved here to help take care of them, and for me to retire here. Never expected going to put an industrial site right, especially heavy industrial site, with all the applications. There are I1s all up and down through Highway 11E, but they want I2, which is more hazardous to the environment.
Thanks, sir. Frank Roskin?
I'm good, I think everybody said everything.
Okay, thanks, sir. I have Julia Walker, Walker. Miss Ma'am, you have a Newport address, do you have a business in Jefferson County?
I own a cattle in Jefferson County.
Okay.
My name is Julie Walker. I do have Jefferson County roots. My grandfather and great uncle lived here until they were relocated by eminent domain. They didn't just face a facility coming next door, they were told they had to leave. They went to Laven County then, through another eminent domain. My family ended back up in Newport, so I'm well aware of its effects a lot. As time has gone on, I have had a career in agricultural communications marketing as well as farming interests up and down East Tennessee. I work with a variety of farmers in several sectors of agriculture. In the past year, those sect, those sectors and concerns have dealt with COVID, have dealt with food security, have dealt with food concentration in big packer houses, and what to do about it. USDA has announced their intentions to do something about this in a bipartisan effort, which was announced by the Biden administration, that resulted from bipartisan work. USDA announced last week, they are in creating a $550 million grant program specifically for the purpose of aiding local slaughterhouses and local abattoirs and meat production facilities to address local needs for meat. Those grants are expected to be made available this fall. And anybody who has written grants, and I have done my fair share in the past two years, knows that there are going to be specific timelines to be met, specific parameters in place. That will affect the financing of local meats LLC. I can also tell you, this proposed grant has had numerous discussions, and has lifted the hopes of farmers all over East Tennessee who are desperately needing additional slaughterhouses. To sum all this up, I can tell you also that Jefferson County right now can be an example. The problems have been outlined. Perhaps the I2 zoning could be reconsidered and reworded so that agriculture interest such as an abattoir comes out of that zone. You all will know better than that quite a bit. But you all have the opportunity here tonight to set an example for the rest of Tennessee and the rest of the southeast on how to solve problems together and address food security in the United States. And on a closing note, I'll also say this. Mark Pettit and I have been friends for a long time, I'm not going to lie, people know it. Mark Pettit, several years ago, came into a pretty dire situation when he moved back to Jefferson County to manage a co-op here. Mark proved his ability to address problems, to work through problems, and create a thriving business. I have every belief that he and his team of investors he's put together will do that with this.
You couldn't have a better man.
Thank you.
Here you can, I'll be proud of it.
Mark, I know that you've had an opportunity to get more people here, and we kind of said we were going to be limited, and I appreciate that, so I just want to get that on. So, we're back to our regular agenda. Resolution 2021-2029 comes from zoning, needs no motion or second. Resolution 2021-2029 comes from zoning. Needs no motion or second. So it's open for discussion. Mr. Fagan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Learning about this in our work session last week. First, I've really heard of it, so I, again, the process of due diligence. And in that, regarding zoning resolution, I talked to the zoning office. I've got some other documents discussing the powers and the function of the planning commissions. I look at Title 13 of the Tennessee Code. CTAS documents, master documents, the strong Bureau documents. One gentleman said that some legal opinions regarding spot law. Answered some of my questions. Probably found just as many more through that process. So I don't feel comfortable at this time that I am informed well enough to make a decision. I'd like to continue my due diligence. I'd like to talk to Mr. Merode, I believe, was about the water treatment topic that he brought. Just for my own edification. So I'd like to make a motion to amend. This motion, or a motion to postpone until our next quarter meeting. And in the entry, I would like commissioners to have questions, to be able to deliver them to your office and get assistance in getting them answered so that you can share with all the commissioners by our next work session. We consider a date for those questions to be delivered to your office, five, say, August 20.
We have a motion to amend, this is our second.
It's a motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone. Your second, postpone. Mr. Blain. Say your second.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion to second. Discussion. Ms. Huffaker.
I would like to see if Commissioner Fagin's willing to add to send us to the planning commission too. I don't know when they meet, to see if there's a way to pull a slaughterhouse into a separate zone by itself without the other business entities that we currently have, or if there's some things they can recommend back to us too, that we might be able to, if he's willing to add.
I'd be willing to add it, but that would be one of the questions actually that I was going to pose, and Cox would be responsible for getting that answered. I'm sure that would be his resource for getting that answered.
And the earliest you could get on that would be August 24th, I believe.
Discussion on the amendment, not the amendment, the postponement. Mr. Kerson.
I was going to ask John Neil, are you still on the planning?
I am.
Is there any options that we look at zoning to do, just as Katie has said, to pull an agriculture business like this into a zone that doesn't allow some of the unwanted things that I-2 would allow, and still be able to do the business that these gentlemen want to do?
Well, based on some of the things considered here tonight, Mr. Kerson, tonight, the best thing would be to go and put the other things under review. Leave this in I-2 with solar farms and other things. And if that's what you're worried about, and I'm worried. If this is, if the I-2 zone can be modified for anything that's not been applied for, this has already been applied for, so you've got to leave that there. But you can limit the allowed use to a slaughterhouse and a solar farm and accessory building. You can take out the smelter plant. You can take out asphalt plant. You put that under review and put it to what, Mr. Seals, an I-3?
Maybe an I, yes.
We can make a new category. If that's the, if that's the whole issue, which people keep saying they have an issue with zoning, we can limit what is in I-2. But this one's already been applied for, so you can take everything else out. But it's, if you start, the process is when you start with this, like if you want to take, if you want to change the I-2 zone, then we put it under review. So none of the things that's not been applied for can be applied for. Or if they do, they have to wait till it works its process through. The planning commission would say, okay, we want to take out landfills, smelter plants, asphalt, incinerators, and chemical plants. And all that would come, would say it starts the process. Mr. Seals would take it to all the regional planning commissions, Dandridge Planning Commission, everything there, they approve it, it comes back here, and the commission approves the removal of that and the creation of an I-3, or an I-4, or I-10, whatever. And so all that's left in that would be solar energy and slaughterhouses in I-2.
Which solar farms are allowed in either?
Correct. But they, they're listed as an allowable use, so we can leave that in I-2 by itself. But the, the best way to move the thing would be to take those out because it's going to take about a six to eight month process to get it through all the counties and the cities and all that.
Takes a while.
It just takes a while to move it. But you can stop anything from being approved by putting that under review and starting that process, and we meet next Tuesday.
Well, you can't get on this one, but you can get on August.
The next month. The next time.
You have a fourth Tuesday.
We can meet and remove all of that out of I-1. If that's, if that's the work, there is no problem doing that. But since this has already been applied for, we can't remove it because the rules say this is where it was, so you have to abide by the rules. If you can't change them, you can change everything on the fall. And since all, if they're truly worried about chemical plants and incinerators and all that, and I, and I, I find that a very valid point. Then we can remove all of that stuff and make an I-2 as a narrow designation. And we may want to add that other agriculture industries thing in, but we can't remove the slaughterhouse out of I-2 while this is acting. So if you postpone it, we can't do that anymore. Because it's already been applied.
Mr. Scarlett has the floor. Please be respectful as our commissioners are speaking. Thank you.
Is that answering your question?
You are. So what would be the process in order to remove these other things out of the I-2? How would we get that process going?
On the planning commission. Unless we call a special meeting. We could call a special meeting. The process would be, come whatever that meeting is, if we would have to publish it, if we were looking at changing I-2, Mr. Seals would do that. He would go in there and the planning commission would vote then to remove stuff, if that's what they chose to do. They could remove the other stuff. They could tell Mr. Seals, proceed forward. He would go to the regional planning commissions, get that, their approval to change that because their zoning has to fit our categories. Is that correct, Mr. Seals?
Exactly.
And then, once they approve all of it, it would come back here, and the commission would say, okay, we like this new one. We're going to approve this, and we're going to create an I-3, or an I-4, or I-10. And so that's the process. But it just takes a while to move it through because he's got to, whatever their meeting date is, he's got to go through that, Mr. Kerson, that Mr. Kerson. If the, if Jefferson City meets second Thursday, if Dandridge meets fourth Tuesday, he, he's got to get on their schedule.
It's quite possible we could be October. We meet in October?
Yes.
Yeah, it's possible we could do it, but that's up to the planning commission, really.
So getting back to the postponement. Ms. Huffaker. Yes, you may.
Okay. So from listening to the citizens, my personal preference would be if we could pull the slaughterhouse out separate with nothing else in it, if that's possible from the planning commission, since there's windmills, solar farms, whatever.
Very possible. We can't pull a slaughterhouse out.
Well, I mean, leave it.
But we can leave it in this zone by itself.
Everything else shifts out to I-3, so, okay. But the part I left out is also I would like to see standards listed under the zoning for this.
Well, the problem is, our standards, we can write whatever we want. But here's the problem. USDA either approves or denies those slaughterhouse permits.
Well, maybe we reference.
And if we can write all the things down we want, Ms. Huffaker, it ain't going to matter.
But, but we're not even referencing EPA, USDA in our zoning plan.
Well, they can't get the permits to open it without the EPA approval, without TDEX approval, without all of that. They can't open permits. I mean, they can't open a slaughterhouse, meatpacking facility, harvest facility, whatever term we want to call it. But we don't have the authority.
Right, but I would like wording that says in accordance to whatever, TDEX, whatever the regulations are that you typically follow with slaughterhouse. So there's something definitely within our procedure.
Is that not in our rules that we follow the state laws?
What I speak to say is they're going to have to go by our site plan requirements.
Yes, they have to do that.
That, that's one thing they have to do, period, in I-2. We got, the planning commissions have to approve their site plans, which is setbacks, entrances, all that stuff, drainage. So let's do it. It's a long way to go to get set.
I think it's the environmental issues that the public is concerned about.
And, and if you want to, we can put that note in there. But what I'm telling you is, we cannot sit the regulations for them.
Right, we don't govern, we don't govern them.
Yes.
But we can say we're following them in our document.
And our rules in the, in the planning commission thing says that we must follow all state and federal laws. It already says that. But if you, if that would make you more comfortable.
It would personally make me more comfortable.
We can put that in there, that they must follow EPA, TDEX, USDA. That, that's no problem to put that in.
Ms. Huffaker, you're, you're asking that planning has also been involved in this postponement?
Yes, so we can go ahead and send it through and not have to wait until we meet again, and then talk.
Okay. Mr. Blain, is you, you second that? Are you okay with that being added to that motion, to the?
Mr. Fagin, what say you? His motion.
To Mr. Fagin's postponement.
I'm asking him if he's okay with him making the motion.
Are you okay? Hey, I, I thought, you said you thought that would be a part of it.
That would have been one of the questions I would be asking, what, what is the process for makes this to happen? So certainly we can add that to the motion.
Are you in agreement, Mr. Blain?
Well, I mean, if we're just going to kick it down the road and do the same thing, the golden rule used to be you treat others how you want to be treated. You're seeing it's those that control the gold makes the rules. That's what you're seeing. When the liberty of one person or group is infringed on by another, it's time for the government, which is us, to step in. But if we're not going to do the right thing, then hell no.
Sir.
Are you okay with it?
Okay. Request to speak, Mr. Doctor.
I came in here tonight with my mind pretty well made up on how I was going to vote, but yet open-minded to everything everybody had to say. But I want to explain the way I'm going to vote because I feel like I owe it to everybody in here, whether you're for it or against it. And I'm going to go ahead and say what I have to say because it's reflective of how, if we vote on the request, it's reflective of how we'll vote on it and how we'll vote on this amendment, or this motion to postpone. Generally speaking, I'm a strong proponent of property owner rights, in that if you own the property, you have the right to keep it, sell it, or otherwise use it as you please. But property owner rights apply to everyone who owns property. And if the use of one piece of land adversely affects a neighboring property, then issues arise and the sky gets a little cloudy on what should and should not be allowed. And I suppose that's a large reason why we have zoning regulations. In regard to this specific request for rezoning, it appears that the property is near both agricultural, residential, and industrial zones, with the mines being industrial. And I do agree with the lady that spoke earlier. I know mines are grandfathered in. But this request, so in that aspect, it may not be spot-changing to request it be industrial, but this request is to go not to I-1, which mines are, to I-2. And there's a somewhat significant difference between the two. Section 9.9 of zoning regulations reads in part, I-1 industrial district. The intent of this district is to establish areas for industrial land uses that require goods, transportation facilities, and utilities that will not adversely affect neighboring properties. Section 9.10 of our zoning regulation reads in part, I-2 environmental district. The intent of this district is to establish areas for heavy industrial activities that will minimize adverse effects on neighboring properties' environment. So in comparison, our own regulations, whether you agree with it or not, say that I-1 will not have adverse effect on neighboring properties. I-2, I-2, it says that although minimal, it acknowledges rewards it will have an adverse effect. So given that, I think that fits the property owner right scale in favor of the residential agricultural landowners, and that's why I'm not going to vote nothing.
Do you want to wave your clothes and say?
Yes.
Any other discussion on the postponement? Mr. Bales.
Is there any other zoning that is working? I-2, the water is the biggest concern up there.
Well, let me, I'm at, I'm really. Let me answer that. You, the planning commission, it goes back to the planning commission. They could very well say, okay, we're going to allow I-1.
Right.
Then what are you going to do? Because they, all they have to do is go do a site plan and follow the site plan rigs, and, and it'd be allowed. So when, when Mr. Pettit come in, and we've never had a request like, of course, y'all know we've never had a slaughterhouse request since zoning been on that scale. So I told him to look for some industrial zone property, which is only Bush Brothers mines and industrial, because it has to be close to industrial zone property. That's what he did. So planning commission approved it, and here we are. But they could say maybe an A-2 or an A-3 or something would allow that. Then, you know, again, it'd be up to you all.
That's my question.
Yes, sir.
The I-2 was put, they decided to put it in I-2 for one reason.
That was four years ago, and I, I don't think, and John Neil's on there, he might help me. I, I don't think we ever thought they'd be.
Well, we didn't think a lot of things. You didn't think it'd be a pandemic.
Right.
You didn't think it would launch up there. You didn't think it could be. But the reason it was, we thought about putting it in I-1. Well, this county was coming off lawsuits with Resalee property down there of an open pit mine, an aquaric. And in I-1, you can have quarries. And the thought was, we put it in this other zone, probably never be there. I'm on the planning commission. I will absolutely own that mistake, but it's a fixable mistake. We can, the, the zone, if you all are truly not worried about slaughterhouses, and you're worried about the zone, we can fix the zone. All that that matter is a little bit of time and effort. We can do that. That's not a problem. I think that's a very valid concern. We can take out all those chemicals, smelter, landfill. We can take all that out of that zone factory, create another. We can create, we can. We can cre, we can take out the factories, we can take out anything. We can take it every bit out except the slaughterhouse and the solar engine and leave it. So what we call it is irrelevant. We can put it in any zone and say it's allowable use. We can narrow that zone up to where that's the only thing in it. And it can never be anything but a slaughterhouse in that zone. So if they go to sell it, it either have to be a slaughterhouse or it have to be rezoned again. We can do all of that. That's very fixable. If that's the worry, if the worry is if you don't want the slaughterhouse there, that's never gonna satisfy you. And I, I need to remind everybody that whether we zone this thing, I-2 tonight, that slaughterhouse can be built in A-1. The difference between that is there's a cap on the number of animals.
Yes.
It does not, it does not preclude them from, it does not preclude them from having a USDA inspector. It does not preclude them from have a carcass inspector. They can build a slaughterhouse. The slaughterhouse can be started. Because it's already zoned A-1, it is allowable use in A-1. So they can do all of that. The only difference is the number of animals. And that's not a, you know, that's a factor that we looked at this thing and felt that I-2, the other thing that you all understand in I-1 is besides the quarry, you can put an adult bookstore, you can also put a massage parlor, you're not gonna want that. So that's the reason it was put in I-1. And that was the conversation that happened, I mean, in I-2. But like I say, it's a fixable zone. We can take everything out and leave the slaughterhouse and move everything into another zone. That's not an issue. The planning commission, and I'm on the planning commission, and I'll make the motion myself. And I think Mr. Paul is on the planning commission, I think he'll second it when I make the motion. And we'll do it as quick as we have in other meetings.
How about take that adult bookstore?
You're out of order.
Ma'am?
You're out of order.
But like I say, the conversation was that you, that you don't want, and we's coming off the suits with the Griselli mine, and if we don't want an open pit mine opened in, in the same zone, if we've got a slaughterhouse. That's, that's not something that you want. You just wouldn't want to zone a lot more property I-1 unless it was gonna be factory or an industrial coming in. So that's, from that standpoint, we can fix that. Ms. Nelson said find the win-win, we can do that, Ms. Nelson. Me and you had a conversation that said you're not opposed to slaughterhouse? We can fix that zone if that's your worry.
Mr. Scarlett? Let's, uh, talk about the, uh, moving the meat, um, postponement.
Okay, I'm done.
And if, any other discussion, if not, Mr. Fagan originally made the motion, he can speak to the motion.
Before I close, I have a question. You mentioned the possibility of, uh, a call meeting. But, but question whether it can be put on the agenda for the upcoming meeting?
No, no, can't.
Well, you don't have a mechanism on the planning commission like we do here for a motion, to add something to the agenda?
Well, it's already been out in the paper and we've never done it before, I think, our meeting. It's that huge.
I'm saying that we add things on the night of to a two-third vote, did it?
We've never heard of it.
As far as I know, my, really don't, we don't have a mechanism on the planning commission. And it has, because it has the, the stuff that the planning commission deal with has required notes.
And I just want that clear, okay?
As long as I know.
So, so the quickest way to go over the planning commission to call me?
Well, yeah. Or just wait until August, yeah, because you're not gonna come back here, Lotco.
You gotta make it on August 24th. And if you're going to the city, can we be back here, Lotco?
Well, I gotta go to the city anyway, I say. So it'll take another month at least.
I, I would encourage you to call me, to, to give yourself the best opportunity.
But we still gotta go to the cities, which you mean, said, Jim.
There should be time, don't they? Okay. Listening.
Just based on the discussion that occurred here and the questions that were raised, it seems to me that there's a lot of folks that could benefit from this more time to contemplate this, research this, and be a good deal with it. So I would encourage you to vote for this motion.
Mr. Reed?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Mr., I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, if you have the votes, you can't do that.
Now, he gets closed on the motion. It's time to vote. All in favor of the postponement, vote yes. No, if you're not in favor. Pass by, I'm joining. They left votes.
Failed. They left votes.
Motion fails. We're back to the original resolution, 2021 dash 2029. Floor is open to discussion. Anyone to speak in favor or anyone to speak against? Mr. Reed?
I think we're missing a very valid point. I've listened to numerous citizens tonight who own property close to this facility, they can open up their doors, they can see it. And when this first came up, I asked myself the question that one of the citizens mentioned. How would I respond to something that isn't needed, but it would be 200 feet from my front door or my back door? If I'm an honest person, I would say I wouldn't like it. I agree with what Commissioner Dockery has said. I think that we owe it to the citizens of this county when it may affect their property, and I believe it would affect the value of their property. I believe it would definitely affect the aesthetic of that area. It's a very beautiful little area, and I look at the nice houses as you go down through the road. I think we owe it to the citizens to really think about this, because we're getting ready to change our life and we can't take everything out of that. But they still gonna open up that door and they gonna see that facility. Thank you.
Mr. Reed, anyone to speak in favor of the motion? Mr. Carmichael, are you in favor? Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, we've all had a long night here tonight. But there's, there's still a lot of issues here that need to be spoke about, you know? And not too many years ago, I was approached by a group of people from the district. And they was wanting to buy an intermodal rail, sell it back. They wanted the county to buy it and might build an industrial park. That's what they wanted to do. Y'all may or may not know that, but it's just a few years back, that's what the conversation was. And I'm pretty much gonna tell you the same thing that I told them then, you know? You don't know what the railroad's gonna do, but that railroad's there. You know what the mine's gonna do, but they're there. We can't change this. You done heard tonight that you've been told that property owners rights and A-1, they can build that slaughterhouse. Really, all you're discussing tonight is how many cows they can slaughter. That's the only point that you can actually sit here and make tonight. All the talk, let's get it down to the rules, regulations, and the laws and how this applies to everybody in this room. We're all neighbors. When this is over, everybody gonna meet in the road sooner or later. And I mean, it don't matter to me if you agree with me or not, I'm good either way. Because I can listen to an opposing view without shaking my head no. I can sit and listen to you and appreciate what you say. But tonight, in-your-face government don't solve anything. We see it all the time. So you gotta learn to get along and respect each other. And that's what I got to say about this. You want a property owner's right.
Mr. Chairman, get a favor, if you can. No. Please, uh, provide the courtesy to commissioners when they're speaking, they have the floor, no one else does.
But my point is, you've already got rail yard there, you've got mines there, you've got trucking companies that use 118, you're sitting on a state highway. I can appreciate your view. I live on the side of a mountain in Talbot in a rock pile. So I figure where I live is probably too rough to build anything, but that, you know, that's where I live and that's where I chose myself to live. The, uh, the mega site, when it came, they gonna take my home, they gonna take my dad's home. What'd I say? Pay me, write a check. I didn't say I was against it, I was against having it as a doing. But in this point, we respect each other for property owner's rights, just like you have rights, I have rights, the gentleman that owns this land has rights. It's a double-edged sword. So when you make this choice and you start trying to change ground motions, you start trying to change what you're for and against, you know, in the end, was it a good idea to build Highway 118? If you talk to the people that own the land, they'd tell you no. But I don't think we can all drive down the old highway. Was it a good idea to build Cherokee Lake? Here's what we gotta look at and ask ourselves serious questions, ask commissioners here to see. If you agree with me or not, it don't matter, but the point of it is, I'm telling you what reality is in America today. It's about change. Your life will never stay the same, it's gonna change. I think COVID has, has showed everybody just how much your life can change unlike that. None of us are guaranteed tomorrow. So we gotta find a middle of the road and respect the rule of order in law and say, well, that's the rule. And that's why I'm here tonight. I will support a businessman in Jefferson County that's gonna run a business and run it right. I'm not gonna vote against feeding and I'm not gonna vote against the sales tax that our school system desperately needs. And that's the point. That's the point. When, when you say I'm not gonna do this, I can go to Knox County. Well, when you go to Knox County and you spend your thousands of dollars, what did you just do? You just helped build Knox County. You didn't do nothing for Jefferson. So here's what we gotta be. But we all still gotta live in the community together called Jefferson County. So just be nice is all I can say.
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Blavens.
There's right and there's wrong, and you have to live with that. Thank you.
Any other requests to speak? Seeing none, you'll be voting on Resolution 21 dash 29. If you're in favor of Resolution 21-29, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. Motion fails. Please, this is our meeting. Next time on the agenda is approval of not recent bonds. Mr. Park, do you have any others to add to it?
Mr. Blavens? I guess we didn't hear from another commissioner, said, uh, the I-2 is gonna infringe another region property. That's what I was thinking, so.
I'm so sorry for picking up this other.
She don't need another thing. She was asking me how to vote. Here we go. I got you here.
Let's get started, mate. We should pass the collection plate.
Yeah.
They approved me then, no?
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the approval of no reason bonds. Mr. Hurley has an updated list for you. A motion is on the board by Mr. Burnley, second by Mr. Seale. Any discussion? Pretty done. All in favor, both yes. Opposed, both no. Mr. Douglas. All right. Motion passed. Next item is mayoral appointments by the mayor. They're listed in your packet. You can take them as a whole, item one, two, and three. A motion to approve would be in order.
Take them as a whole?
Yes. Did we get a motion and a second? And we just voted. Okay. Passed by majority. That brings us down to item two, to extend the coronavirus relief. The school extended ours through the end of the year. Ours only until March. So we would need a motion and a second to extend those benefits to our employees. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Burn, do you have an amendment?
No, I'm sorry.
He won't make a motion.
I was hitting a motion. I was just, yeah.
He just got excited. We hit a button there, so we'll hear it. We're just sitting there pushing buttons. Passed by majority. That brings us to, let me get my book. All right. Financial reports, and that would be, hold on. Resolution 21-34, surplus of the finance office. Well, not the whole office, but the items listed. Favor, both yes. Opposed, both no.
I know she is.
Resolution 21-38. So we're on 38 now. It's on 34. Pass surplus of items in the sheriff's office. It's listed in your packet. Motion and second. No discussion. All in favor, both yes. Opposed, both no. Passed by majority. The next item is about the balloon festival, the wine festival, folks. Does require a vote, but we voted not even last year. We just had to be notified. But I think it's better that we have a motion and a second. So we have a motion and a second. Discussion. Both yes if you're in favor, no if you're opposed. Passed, it's 19-0. Budget.
Yes, sir.
101 amendment one. Does the current fund bounce? No motion coming from the budget committee. Doesn't need a motion or a second. Discussion. Any thoughts? We're gone.
No, we got separate funds.
Separate funds. In favor, both yes. Opposed, both no. Passes 18-1. Next item is general fund 101 amendment two. Mr. Ray. Passed 19-0. Next item is special revenue fund 127. Amendment one. In favor, both yes. Opposed, both no. Passes 19-0. Next item is highway 131. Amendment number one. In favor, both yes. Opposed, both no. Passes 19-0. Next item is budget amendment number one, fund 141, general purpose. Passes 19-0. Let me get this last one, then we'll do it. General purpose fund 141, budget amendment one. There's a two. There's a budget amendment two.
Yes, sir.
It was sent in our packet. What exactly is it? I don't have it in my.
Basically, for the program to get ready to start, money out of S U three. Been called, since approved by the school board, and was conditional approval through the budget committee. Meaning conditional upon your office approval.
So it went through budget. We just didn't get it in this part of the pack or... If you're in favor, both yes. Opposed, both no. Passed by majority. Next item is resolution. So you have nominated committee. Doesn't need a motion or a second. There are several items on there. The first one is long-range planning committee that we talked about. These are the people that the nominated committee recommended for it. We don't need a motion or a second in such recognition based on the committee. Any discussion or other nominations?
Can we take them as a whole?
You don't take them all as a whole, sir?
That would be my recommendation, unless anybody has any reason that we shouldn't.
Thank you. No objection. We'll be voting all those that are coming from the nominated committees. Passes. And Chuck Catlett's name is spelled wrong, perhaps. That brings us to resolution 21-33. And this is Tennessee Department of Transportation, right away. Motion to approve, motion and second. All in favor, both yes. Opposed, both no. Passes. Next item is resolution 21-35. This is the redistricting committee. Which needs to, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. Anybody want to honor off? Any trades happening since part position? If not, if you're in favor, both yes. Opposed, both no. It passes. Resolution 21-36. This comes from Mr. Doctor. Would I assume that would be a motion from you?
Yes, sir. Motion to approve.
Can we put him down for motion and... Second by Mr. Reed. Discussion.
Anything change on that?
Do you care to tell the changes?
Yeah, the two major changes, or only changes really, our current resolution limits any and... Limits of requests for substation funding to the three previously identified areas in need, which were at the time straw planes, and they've marketed since, got the substation there. So the only two areas that are in the current resolution, you can apply for substation funding in Swansylvania area and the Deep Springs area. This opens it up to all requests. In my mind at least, gives the fire departments courtesy, allowing them to ask. And then the second thing it does, it doesn't live or die with the chief's recommendation. In the same fashion of basically all of our other committees. We, it goes to the chiefs. We, they give us a recommendation, goes to public city, public service committee for consideration, recommendation, and the budget, and the commission. And commission, this body is always can vote it up or down whenever they please, based on justification of the request, I suppose.
Mr. Scott.
Mr. Chairman, I am really concerned, and I understand what Mr. Doctor is trying to do, but I am really concerned that we're going to open this up. And you're going to have a city substation. City, let's take Jefferson City for example, and they want to put in a new one up there at Cullard, and they want to put in one on the other development, and one out in Mount Howard Way, and they want to put in four or five substations. And we're going to end up having the, they're going to be before us, and then you end up adding that funding. I already know Jefferson City wants to put one up towards the county line at that new property development. And the problem is, they're going to put it up there whether we fund it or not. And I, and it worries me extremely that we're opening this thing up to any and all comers, and especially because it's going to disadvantage the smaller apartments and the actual volunteer farm apartments that don't have that kind of resources behind them to open up those stations.
Mr. Kiff.
The concern I have on funding these substations are, are these substations really going to be manned and used, or is it just a way to get additional money? I have problems with funding something that's not operational, where there's not men there to answer calls, and the trucks don't roll out of these substations. So I, I think substations as a whole needs to be readdressed, and how we fund these and requirements behind funding.
Either discussion or amendments. On on. Okay, let's proceed to vote. All in favor, both yes. Opposed, both no. Passes 11-8. Next item, resolution 21-37. Code paper inmates in the county jail. Would need a motion and a second. We got a motion. We got a second. Discussion. No discussion. If you're in favor, both yes. If not, both no. Passes 18-0. Next item is a motion from Heidi Thomas. It's listed in your packet. Make motion to the nominated committee, create an ad hoc committee to the Jefferson County Commission for the purpose of developing a funding proposal to address the needs of the Jefferson Elementary School. I suggest the structure of the committee be composed of the following. Two county commissioners representing the fourth district, the two county commissioners representing the tenth district, the two school board members representing the third district, and a parent of Jefferson Elementary Student School, mayor and director of schools, executive members. Motion by Heidi Thomas, second by Katie Highfacker. Floor is open to discussion.
John Neal's trying to request to speak, but he ain't... Frank's phone's not working.
You're from the Bronx. It's tired. Proceed, Mr. Scott.
Uh, Mr. Chairman. Due to the nature of this thing, we've already heard that we don't know the rules on the stuff on the county money. We've had issues on that. Ms. Katie brought that up earlier about the building. I don't think this is the time to do it. And I'd like to move to postpone this until our October meeting, and take this up, and maybe the school system will have the rules or be better equipped to tell us what the committee would be doing and what advances they could make once we get there.
So this is a motion to postpone?
Yes, sir, till our...
Till the next quarterly meeting?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Team sales, okay. Floor is open to discussion. Ms. Highfacker.
So are you wanting someone to come up with some, what the goal is? Like what the group can do?
I'd kind of like a direction to this thing, and I'd like to know when this thing, when the committee goes forth, they're going to have to have some knowledge about what is contained in those rules. And I just don't think the county has, and I don't think the school system, based on what I know from the county, has what's coming out. They keep sending out 18 pages and 32 pages of changes. And so I think by October, maybe they'll know more of what monies will be available, and they could help the, help the committee kind of figure out which direction we need to go. I just, that's just me.
Does that have the...
Do what?
Does that have the request to speak?
Sure.
So can I ask Dr. Johnson, do you think you'll have more information as far as funding the school system? If we postpone till October or...
One of the places the commission is, and I think what's in question is the change in guidance, the federal stimulus money. Even today, there was some things came down. We're constantly working in our circles with finance to make sure, so, you know, by waiting, we should, yes. To answer your question, one word, yes. If you ask a pre-question, we can't answer one word, you know. And there's also, I know everybody's heard on the national news, infrastructure bill, it's either, you know, we should, we've given an estimate, we don't know what that would be on the school side, of course. I'm, I believe should that be approved, executive, I'd just be gathering information for that body of both commissioners, school board members, everybody. But I do think we'll have that information. And S R three's guidance, even the application, we turned ours in June 25th, and they promised us and expedited everyone. We're going to get those turned around quick. We've not heard boo, and can't even get a really reply to our emails right now to tell us the answer to the question. But we do know that the S R three application drop dead date is August 27th. So certainly by the time this body met again, we should at least be able to have more information than we have now.
Mr. Snodgrass.
I'm struggling with this committee. I just want to share my thoughts on that. I guess for decades, the school board has come forward and put these things on the table without another ad hoc committee and without a level of bureaucracy that can slow down the process. I still believe, I don't believe we need this. It's the school board's responsibility to put this plan as logical and clear, and we can walk out of the community without another level, a special team going into those kinds of things. I mean, they're voting to do that, and yes, some say we're just voting to say yes or no, but we're not. They're fully capable. I really don't understand the need for another level of committee to come and present to this committee or the school board. That's my opinion.
Thank you. We are talking about postponing the committee until October. Or the next quarterly meeting, sorry. Still about beerboard meeting. All in favor of postponing, both yes. Opposed, both no. Has been postponed to the next quarterly meeting. Next item. Mr. Fagan has wanted several items in regards to policy and procedure. Do you want to vote on these as a whole or individually? How do you want them presented, Mr. Fagan?
My preference would be to vote on them as a whole, but somebody has an issue with one of them.
We have a motion and a second. Floor is open to discussion. Mr. Solomon.
Call for a question.
Not be easy for Kenny Michael.
Anyone opposed to having a vote now?
I'd like to speak.
All right, well, I can vote on the question. Get it pulled up here. So, Mr. Solomon's called for the question. This means we have discussion and votes. You have to vote on the call for questions. There is a second. All in favor, maybe discussion and voting, both yes. You want to discuss, both no. Passes 14-5. We will vote on the original motion. If you're in favor, both yes. If you're opposed, both no. Passes 13-5. Now that brings us to the conclusion, board. Okay. Go ahead.
So at our facility meeting, we discussed a number of county administrative offices that we need to be looking at. The motion to pass, I had to make the motion, and it was in full design work. Utilizing funds from the federal funds that are hopefully coming away. The circumstances have changed, but they're not coming away. I think we're less understanding about how we can get here and that sort of thing. The reason we passed that motion was we wanted to expedite moving forward, because we need these spaces to be properly serviced. We've been dealing with this for quite some time. And if these federal funds do become available, everybody's going to be in a sprint to try to move forward at the same time. If we can move ahead, then possibly we could be ahead of the game, much like we did with the school system did with the year. They undoubtedly spent their own fund balance and then they're being part of themselves. That part of it, the finance director is playing better than I. But we have done that on a number of occasions where we have gone ahead and spent the money. So I just wanted to put that out there, and I guess in the form of a motion, which we take. First, I guess a motion to suspend the rules to take action on anything without going to the budget committee. Is that not correct?
Correct.
So what I will be doing, if you all want to do this without going to the budget committee, is making a motion to do exactly what facilities committee asked, but use fund balance to do it. So we can get out of the gate and get ahead of the game on this design work, and know what we're facing with regard to the amount of funding necessary to the administrative offices that we need for the clerk's office and the election commission.
So your motion is to suspend the rules?
Well, I should suspend the rules with regard to this having to pass through budget committee.
Have a motion and a second. Floor is open to discussion. During that, all in favor of suspending the rules, both yes. Opposed, both no. Passes 13-6.
Fails, Mr. Chairman.
Pass two-thirds.
Yeah, awesome. All right. Motion fails.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now, I think we have come to the conclusion of our journey, or adjournment. Please hang around for beerboard meeting. We are...